Calling to order, the Monday, May 6, 2019, regular meeting of the 37th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tim Baker. Councilmember Blanchard.
Here.
Councilmember Dean.
Here.
Councilmember Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Henin.
Here.
Councilmember Stedman.
Here.
And Mayor Turbrack.
Here. First order of business today is the approval of our agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Stedman with support, Councilmember Gavin. Any additions or changes? Seeing no additions or corrections or changes, I should say. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henin.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge. With us today is Pastor Adam Grohl.
That's great. God, we recognize that every good and perfect gift comes from you. Every all blessedness of any great value is from you. And so, Lord, we ask your blessing on this city that we love so much. We ask your blessing on the people and the residents. We pray for this evening, this meeting, that you give discernment and wisdom to this council. Would you be with all the conversations that take place? Have compassion and a desire to serve the city. So, we just thank you for this place, for your protection over our patrol officers. Keep them safe today, we pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please turn to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. It is now time for citizens' comments, when you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Council members will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the City, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item while it is being considered, and when you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
Charles Terrell from Berkeley. The last council meeting, Patty Curtis brought it up and several others of us talked about it as well. Section 4273. There's really been no update since then. I haven't gotten any updates. Patty, I guess, got one message that was incomplete at the time. I'd like to find out where that stands and when DDA is going to be compliant with 4273.
Thank you, Chuck. And just for the record, that is something that will be handled relatively soon in public, just so you're aware. Not just saying that to say that. Seeing, oh, maybe. No? Okay, all right. Seeing nobody else coming up to the microphone for citizens' comments, we will move on to the next item on our agenda today, which is the consent agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read our items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approve of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 37th City Council meeting on Monday, April 15, 2019.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Vote. Motion approved by Councilmember Henin with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Any corrections? Seeing none. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on our consent agenda?
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henin.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. Our consent agenda has passed. We now move on to our regular agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognitions, presentations. Matter of recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing no recognitions or presentations, we will move on to agenda item number two.
Motion number M2919. Matter of approving the appointments to various boards and commissions.
Is there a motion to approve M2919? No move?
Support.
By Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Dean. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consistent with our adopted policies, I compiled the feedback that I received from members of council to put forth the lists you have in front of you today. Included in there is the packets of the individuals asking for these appointments. Reading the slate for you tonight, the Beautification Advisory Committee, which has unlimited space, has Ms. Charlene Condrat with the term expiring July 1, 2022. Danielle Severs with the term expiring July 1, 2022. Communications Engagement, I'm sorry, it should be Citizens Engagement Advisory Committee. Mr. Christopher Kopitsch, and I apologize if I incorrectly pronounce anybody's names, term expiring in 2020. Environmental Advisory Committee, Ms. Jessica Heath, the term expiring in this July. She's fulfilling a vacated position, so she'll have to stand for reappointment in just a few months. Ms. Bethany Gunnell's with the term expiring July 1, 2022. Library Board, Christopher Rennie with the term expiring in 2019, same as Ms. Heath. Mary Jo Armstrong with the term expiring July 1, 2022. And then also Tree Board with Anthony, Mr. Anthony Turner, the term expiring in October 1 of 2019.
It is important to note that a couple of these committees did make recommendations as well, and those recommendations were certainly taken into account by council as we prepared for this. Questions or comments, I should say, on our volunteers pending their appointment this evening? Councilmember Henin?
Yes, I just wanted to mention, Mr. Turner with the Tree Board is a student representative, so I'm very excited that we filled that position.
Excellent. Seeing no additional comments. Are any of our volunteers here today by chance? If not, okay, all right. Well, at any rate, I want to thank all of them for volunteering to serve on the very important boards in the city without, you know, our volunteers and without our boards and commissions. Our city certainly is not the Berkeley that we all recognize and love. So, I want to thank all of them. And with that, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M2919?
Gavin.
Yes.
Henin.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M3019. Matter of approving the Berkeley Street Art Fest event on Saturday, July 13, 2019, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Coolidge Highway between Catalpa and Wolschire for the Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce, P.O. Box 72-1253. Approval is conditional upon the submission of required items and documents prior to event dates.
Is there a motion to approve M3019?
Motion to approve.
Support. Motion approved by Councilmember Dean with support from Councilmember Henin. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we do with all of our application for events, especially the ones that we're excited about, like this one, this has been reviewed by all the appropriate departments, signed off on. You'll see it comes with a recommendation for approval and a long memo by our Public Safety Director, Mr. Matt Kane. The packet includes the implication materials as well as the documentation that the chamber is able to provide so far. Again, the staff recommendation is to approve this item, and I believe we're joined by the applicant here tonight.
Hi. Rosiane Nicolai with the Berkeley Area Chamber and a Berkeley resident. And I have Andy here.
Andy Yover. That's the way I wear.
And he's an instrumental person on the committee to make this event happen. We're excited again to host this event. This will be the second year that we've requested for Coolidge to be closed. The first year, obviously, we had it in the alley behind. And I just can't emphasize the importance of being able to have an event where we can close Coolidge to not only have a fun, entertaining event for the community, but also to draw attention to those businesses on Coolidge. A lot of people who've come, you know, will notice new businesses that have been there for quite a long time and really had a chance to see what's there. So, this year, you know, you guys always ask if there's something new, and this year, we're excited. Thanks to Jenna and White, they are providing some buskers, so we're going to have some street entertainment for part of the time, basically like 1 to 4. So, we appreciate if you support this event and if you have any questions.
Thank you, Rosane, and thank you, Andy. Are there questions from council on this event? As you mentioned, it was now having it on Coolidge certainly is something that's pretty new to most residents of Berkeley. I always think of just 12 Mile has to be the place that we closed down, and I thought having it on Coolidge last year was a wonderful change for the reasons you mentioned, and it just, it changes the feel. So, I was very happy with that. Councilmember Dean?
I don't really have a question. I just want to thank you both for your hard work and organization and coordination. It is a really fun event, and to your point, Mayor, that it changes the vibe and it activates Coolidge more, and I'm, you know, glad to see that. And I like that we see the event growing every year, too. So, just want to let you know how much we appreciate your hard work and your efforts on this event.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Seeing no additional, oh, I have a question. Councilmember Blanchard?
I was still studying here. The, I see that you moved the food trucks this year down closer to Catalpa, so there won't be any food trucks on Franklin?
We don't plan on having anything on Franklin. In fact, the one that we ended up on Franklin is because that person had come late. So, the plan is not to have any food trucks on Franklin. We might, depending on the numbers we get, we still might have some on one end, but everything's supposed to be on Coolidge.
Okay. Thank you.
Except, well, let me take that back. The only thing, Dorothea, will still have the chalk art, so.
Okay. Seeing no other comments or questions, again, thank you both for being here. We look forward to this event. First, we should probably make sure we're going to have it. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Henin.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number four on tonight's agenda?
Discussion. Matter discussing the Coolidge Highway Complete Streets Project.
Do I need a motion to go into discussion for this? We can just discuss, right? All right. We're going to openly discuss this. As we wait for that to come up, I made it known at our last meeting in what I consider to be no uncertain terms, that before this project would begin, council needed some additional clarification on the metrics that would be used to determine if the project was bringing about the desired results prior to it happening. It started to happen, and it was promptly stopped. I made a phone call right away, and as did some other members of council, not because council was not potentially supportive of the project, but because it was starting before we were ready for it to start. The matrix is extremely comprehensive, maybe even more comprehensive than, that took away from its ease of understanding, but we wanted to ensure that every aspect of the project could be measured and analyzed. That being said, the top priority to me and to council, based on our comments the last couple of meetings, was the safety and traffic aspects of that project, including our side streets, needed to be the top priority, not just a priority in the list with every other priority with the same weight. The traffic elements of the matrix are, in my opinion, more, have a little more gravity towards them because it's a safety factor. It's not saying that other aspects of the matrix are not important. I think they're all, it's all great information. It's all information that we need to have to adequately judge this project, but I believe that some need to be prioritized much higher than some of the others. We also needed to know, you know, the targets and the data. We need to make those safety elements sort of mission critical before moving forward with this project, so that we know if the things are falling within the acceptable range or not in the acceptable range. How else are we going to determine whether this project is successful, this trial project is successful? So, the focus of the conversation today is not about moving forward with the project. That is not something that is being discussed. This is a discussion item. From a policy perspective, council already voted to support the project because, again, from a policy perspective, it makes sense. Today, though, we are going to be having a discussion to ensure that we are accurately analyzing the data, prioritizing the critical aspects of the matrix. And I know that myself and many of our colleagues have met with members of the DDA to make sure that we're all on the same page, or at least questions were becoming more clear for our discussion today. We also wanted to have this discussion at a meeting, just like we are right now, as opposed to, you know, trying to make sure all of this was taken care of via email or in some other way. I didn't want to have a special meeting either because I just, I want it to be at a normal meeting, and that's what we're doing today. I'm not going to get into a whole lot of what happened before and why the project stopped or started and then stopped. At this point, that's not what we're here to talk about, but there will be a postmortem on this project, I can tell you that. And we will look at what happened and why things happened the way that it did, so that we certainly don't repeat those types of mistakes in the future. Changes will certainly be made if there needs to be changes in terms of process, how things actually get from point A to point B or C or D. We will certainly be looking at that. But again, today is a discussion, and that is what it is planned to be. There is not going to be a vote today. It's already been voted on, but we need to make sure that we are comfortable with those metrics that were talked about, that I spoke about at the last meeting, and that council spoke about at the prior meetings. With that, to kick things off, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Baumgartner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and we're working on getting the display up for you. So, with that being said, there's a hard copy available, maybe worthwhile for me to get that passed around, just that we're all sort of talking about the same thing. Even up through today, we've been working to edit this document to make sure it accurately reflects the city council's wishes on what exactly we're measuring and make sure that we're emphasizing the important points that council's discussed time and time again in the lead-up to this project. So, you'll see with the updated version here, there's a couple in the audience as well, and just as soon as I can, I will have that up on the board there. So, the, as Mayor said, the initial version, the feedback that we received was overly complex. It weighted things that should not have the same weight evenly, adherence of the city's, the community's plans, and say, crash rates. Those two things aren't the same in anyone's minds, and so we actually took those and removed those completely. So, you'll notice, judging from previous versions to this one, first and foremost, it's a lot less complex than it used to be. It cuts right to the chase, and it, things like aligning themselves to plans really were the kind of things that went into the development of the cross-section that we're proposing. And so, that's sort of, it's already done. There's already, it's already going to have the maximum points. That's not slated to change as measurements come in over the course of the next 6, 12, and 24 months there. So, you'll see, first and foremost, those things have been pulled out. We've got right to the items that really matter, based on the feedback that we've gotten. The first being roadway capacity, that's talking specifically about Coolidge with a 15% increase. Now, we do need to try to establish what some of the decreases look like and how we point it there. But another thing you'll notice is you'll see P/F. And P/F is pass/fail. These are areas where we're going to be rating them on a scale. This is, does it do it, does it do what we want it to do, or does it not do what we want to do? And that's really where the idea of pass/fail comes from. So, there won't be incremental texts. We either show that it's going to move to the maximum or the minimum that it's possibly able to do. The same level, the same comes along with level of service as well. Level of service on Coolidge, we actually put hard, hard numbers there. So, there's the intersection, travel time through individual intersections not to exceed 80 seconds, and 80 seconds is probably the amount of time that it takes most of us to just sort of walk from this side of the room to the other side of the room. So, we want to make sure that that level of service remains intact and functions as it does now. Again, that's a pass/fail item. Anything, it has either work inside that small sliver of functionality, or it does not. Next up, accommodating turning movements through signalized intersections, we'll be working, actually, there'll be, again, studies that come from this. Transportation Improvement Authority, TIA, will actually be doing backup and delay studies. So, this is not just somebody kind of waiting around and going, okay, that's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 cars. All right, that's at that intersection. Write it down. Next up, there actually is a professional element to this. There's the TIA studies traffic, studies backup, make sure that, I mean, they're literally the Traffic Improvement Authority or Association. So, they, they'll be doing this, and there is actually science behind that and traffic engineering behind that as well. Last up, the sections getting to, again, trying to focus in on exactly what matters. We look at traffic volumes on Kipling, Kenmore, Berkeley, and Beverly. Those are the side streets that we did our baseline studies on. We have all the raw data published. Anybody that wants to take a look at hour by hour, speed by speed, it gives volumes, the number of people, peak time traffic, it's all there. So, we now know and we can say, and many of these, we're not going to allow more than, even at peak time, 1 per minute, 1 additional car per minute. Again, that is, on each of these, this is pass/fail. And so, either if we exceed the traffic or not. And again, this isn't going to be scaled or anything like that. So, this is another one there where it has to function in the way it's supposed to function, or again, this is going to be considered to be a failing item here. And you'll see even how we measure those pass/fails. It breaks out, it breaks out even further and goes to, there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 segments here. Kipling north of Catalpa, Kipling south of Catalpa, Kenmore, Berkeley north, yeah, Berkeley north of Catalpa, Kipling south of Catalpa, and again, and Beverly as well. And so, and each one gives the amount we currently see during peak hours, as well as sort of what we want to see after that. Again, oftentimes, we're talking about 1 car per minute or no more than 4 to 5 cars per minute. And the way that we, the way that we arrive at these calculations would be, look specifically at what would the average person notice? And so, we don't want anyone to make all of a sudden feel like their street is busy, all of a sudden feel like they're seeing far too many cars drive up and down the street. And so, there's, when we consulted the traffic engineers and worked with TIA on this, they were the ones that handed down this, say, you know, we don't want anyone to feel uncomfortable on their own road. This is within, for most people, this is what will feel comfortable to them. And that's, again, that's why we were recommending this to the city council. Now, we've had conversations about how to best present this data. That, again, we'll be making some amendments there. We talk about, there's, we talk about units here, but, you know, maybe less than or equal to 60 cars per hour, and then we talk about how many cars that is per minute. Again, we'll be updating this to make sure it look, it's incredibly clear for anyone to just pick it up and read and know exactly what to expect on their own street if they live on one of these 6 segments of road. That's the roadway function. Again, these elements have definitely a safety item to them. And then, you'll see the second portion of this, we go into items 5, 6, 7, and 8. We talk about crash rate per mile. This, you'll see phase, and it's laid right out there. A 20% decrease or increase will be 1 point, a 30% increase or decrease will be 2 points. So, again, so that somebody can see exactly how we scale these. And these are items, these don't have necessarily a traffic science behind them, but we wanted to pick some, we were looking at something that says, what is, we don't have a lot of accidents on there now, thankfully. You get about, I think we said the 3-year average was about 80 crashes. Any crashes, too many if you're the one that's in it, of course, but we want to make sure that, well, the percentage-wise, these aren't large jumps, and thankfully, they will not be in a single year. Again, a very low tolerance for this road not functioning the way it's supposed to function. Next up, crash rates at intersections. We're actually going to pull those out and measure those separately, again, with a 20% and a 30% incremental point system here. Last two, we look at vehicle speed, consistently matched design speed. That's an area where, again, we're going to, narrative portion of this, we're going to explain a little bit more, but as of right now, we want people to go, to run at or just below the speed limit now. We, most of our drivers, based on the traffic data we have right now, do a fantastic job running the speed limit like they ought to, but we do still see outliers. We do still see people that take it upon themselves to disregard those traffic, those posted traffic speeds. And that's an area where we want to try to find some additional functionality with Coolidge. And that's, so, design speed in this scenario would be 30 miles an hour. That's what we've designed the road to do or road to function, and that's what we want to keep people doing as well. So, again, some additional explanation there, but you can read the intent at this point. Last is emergency vehicle movement is unhindered and allows for direct access to dedicated travel lanes. This is not just our own public safety officers as they utilize the corridor, but also there's a number of ambulance companies and other outside agencies that utilize Coolidge to access Beaumont as well. And so, we'll be relying a lot on the anecdotal experience of those drivers, but until we're able to wire with GPS or something like that, we actually checked on, a couple of things we checked on so far is whether or not these vehicles have a GPS system, whether or not they have dash cam, something that we can sort of take the human element out of this and rely on a better extent to sort of unfiltered data. Unfortunately, this is one of those areas where we don't have that. So, we will be relying a lot on the driver's feedback on this. So, again, making sure that people get out of the way, clear the street, seeing how useful the center turn lane will be for them, make sure that they don't need to cross the center turn lane into the oncoming travel lanes in order to move around a stationary vehicle. There's a series of questions that we'll be asking them on, so that we can get the good feedback on how well this is working in that regard. So, this runs through roadway function and traffic safety items. I know that the council's put a great amount of emphasis on these particular items, and I hope we've met the mark here. Of course. Boy, who couldn't have called that, right? All right, from the top. So, anyway, number one, I apologize that everybody wasn't able to read along with that. Yeah, now you're here. Are you connected or am I?
I am.
Oh, okay. Wizard of Menlo Park.
I'm in the hallway. He's hiding.
Wizard of Menlo Park, ladies and gentlemen. So, this is what I just read. You'll see, again, again, working, not just to try to meet the council's expectation, but we've got, I've got some really constructive feedback from residents as well, many of them advocating for a simpler approach, one that's, that doesn't muddle too much of the important data by mixing it with things that won't be initially important to us in 12 months. We still want to collect as much data on this project as possible, but again, it's important that we really place the proper emphasis on traffic and functionality, because this is where we're going to see truly at that 12-month point whether or not this is meeting the needs of the community. So, again.
Okay. Quick overview, sir? All right. So, council discussion, I'll open it up for council discussion first and then anybody else that certainly wants to be involved. We'll have that opportunity as well. Council members have comments at this point, just based on what we've heard and the data that we now have and what we need to evaluate this project? Councilmember Blanchard, I guess we'll just kind of start down over there. Andy?
I think it's an improvement from what we've had, and I, it's a quick look that we've got so far today. It looks good to me. I think it should answer most of the questions that we have and that the residents have brought forward to us. So, I'm good to go with it.
Councilmember Stedman?
I think this is very well done and understandable, and I- I think this is very well done and understandable, and I'm good with it also.
Okay. Councilmember Dean.
I agree with what's been said so far. I think it was important to extract the safety concerns, the, the items that address safety. And I like the updated version, and I want to thank everyone responsible for doing this, the public feedback, the DDA, our city manager, and my co-council members for, you know, recognizing and, and making this matrix the best it can be. Thanks.
And before we continue, you know, I, well, we'll just move on, and then I'll make my comments. Go ahead. Councilmember Henan.
All right. I, it is an improvement. I have a number of issues and questions with it. How far into the weeds do we want to get?
Far enough. And it makes sense. It's far enough that it makes sense for, for residents to follow and not too far into the weeds.
Yeah, these are at a, these are at a high level, so, number one and two, the roadway capacity, the level of service, I'm comfortable with those. Those make sense, and being a pass/fail makes sense. Number three, accommodating volume of turning movements at signalized intersections. That doesn't say, that doesn't specify what the threshold is, what the, I don't even know what that, how you measure that and what that measurement would be, that would trigger it to go up or down. And so, I think that needs clarification. Number four, the traffic volumes. So, specifically with Beverly and Berkeley south of Catawba, where we talk about a total of four to five vehicles per minute is acceptable. So, let's pick one, and I actually suggest four and a half, which would be 270 per hour, up from 176 and up from 191, respectively, for those two. So, instead of a range there, you know, and if you really want five, let's just say five and not make it a range. Number seven, the vehicle speed, matching the vehicle speed. Again, what's the threshold that makes it go up or down? And is there any science behind those numbers? Do we just pick a random number? Or, you know, is there some reason, you know, if we go faster than these speeds, you know, it's a, you know, it makes crashes significantly worse, and that's why we pick that threshold? And then, then overall, on the safety and roadway function ones, this first page, you know, are there any that trigger automatic failures? For example, if the road becomes less safe, it shouldn't matter, it shouldn't matter which of the, what anything else is, you know, it is an automatic failure for the entire project. But we need to, you know, specify which of these are those automatic triggers.
Okay. Good for now?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Gavin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think this iteration is quite an improvement from the first one I saw. I think that the, some of the measurables on here are definitely, for lack of a better way to describe it, a lot more measurable. And so, I think that, I think in that, in that sense, it's been quite an improvement from what it was. It highlights, as Councilmember Dean said, it highlights some of the, or the key points, certainly for me, the safety aspect and the roadway function as well. So, I'm, I'm comfortable at this point, moving forward with it, but certainly I'm willing to talk about some of the things that Councilmember Henan said as well.
Thank you. So, I have a few nits as well to pick here, just again, so that we can be as clear as possible. I was actually going to say that I would prefer to see those at four instead of four and five. To me, less impact on those side streets is better. I'm not a resident that lives necessarily on those roads, but if I did, I would probably much prefer the less, lesser of the options, regardless of what the road can handle, based on what currently happens there and what potentially could happen there. I mentioned earlier in my comments about some, you know, mission critical, and I would say, you know, if it's a pass or a fail, or the, the safety in particular, crash rates, to me, those are automatic triggers. I mean, if we're going up in those sections, I don't consider this to be a successful trial. Now, I certainly hope that that is not the case, and all of the research and data that showed that it should not, but if that were the case, then as far as I'm concerned, it is not a successful trial run, and, and at that point, would be advocating that we re-stripe it back. Again, that's not to say that all of the items on here are not important. I mentioned that they all do. They provide us a wealth of data and a wealth of information, but there are some that are certainly more critical than others, and in my opinion, that is certainly the safety, the safety factors, but also the impact on our residents on those side streets. And that doesn't mean that, you know, in the first month, there's residents on side streets. Yes, we know that's going to happen early on. That's why we have a six-month and a 12-month review of these to see, yeah, we know initially, just like you open a new restaurant. Yeah, you open a new restaurant, it's, it's, you know, very busy, or a store for a while, and then things kind of start to level off, assuming that that will hold true for this. But if it doesn't, again, that's why this is a, a trial period, why we're studying this, why we have all of these metrics in place, so that we can ensure that if it's not bringing about the desired results, then it will revert back. Any other comments from council before I open it up to the residents? Councilmember Henan?
Yeah. The reason I went with four and a half is, looking back at the source from the emails from the consultant, they suggested, I didn't have time to pull up the original email, so this is from memory, but a 60 to 70% increase would be comfortable. And so, that is why they said four and a half. It was, or four to five, it's in that range, four and a half is close to the actual percentage.
I, I would have no problem equating to four and a half. I just, for me, my mind works, what's going to bring about the least amount of change or impact potentially on residents? And it may not, it may not even be, you know, something that they actually realize. It may be negligible, just a few more cars per minute. But, in the event that it's not, or we're up and over those numbers, you know, those are the important things as far as I'm concerned. Okay? Questions or comments before we open it up? Councilmember Blanchard?
On number three, Councilmember Henan was talking about the, the measurement there. I, I thought that TIA had delays of returning in one of their studies, and if they do, then that could be the measurement, and we could, if it gets worse, we know we're in trouble. I, I can't remember everything that was in that study, but in some of the older studies that was there, I don't know what the latest ones, but we need to look at that, because they could do a, a study of delays for turning, and we can just say if it, you know, set the baseline, and if it gets worse, we.
Part of the, part of the question is, and, and I don't have the technical expertise to answer this, how much worse is enough that it triggers?
Right. What is the additional delay?
At least the numbers should be available, and then we just have to make a decision on, on the magnitude of the change.
Agreed.
And I, I too have no problem with four and a half.
Okay.
Kurt Hight, Berkeley. Thank you very much for putting this on the agenda tonight. I'm looking, really forward to discussing it. Now, sorry for my voice, I've been a little bit under the weather. So, I came tonight to address the benchmark metrics that was provided in January, and the original goal with the metrics was to provide a clear and concise way to determine success or failure, the diet, which we all can agree with. And I think that even the metrics, the measures that we're looking at tonight, I think, goes a long way, can, can probably tell a story behind, like, it goes into detail, a lot of detail, and it, but I think it really falls short in being clear and concise to, to show failure. So, it fails to deliver on that, and I think the reason why is because a lot of the data is being obscured behind arbitrary values, the, the rating scale of negative two to positive two. So, I, I, I think that we should have redirected and looked at what the Federal Highway Administration provides, which is a very clear guide on how to create a road diet evaluation metrics that provides the baseline data, the performance target, which would define whether you expected it to go up or down from the baseline, and finally, it would allow you to track the data at predetermined time intervals. To measure the impact on traffic, let's say, the metric should be providing the average daily traffic, which we've heard talked about, for Coolidge and the local residential streets, as well as the average per hour traffic, and the peak AM and the peak PM traffic counts. So, therefore, you can compare those. Then, for each of these, we would have the performance target defined, remain within, and to remain within a percentage, percentage of that baseline. We're not talking about each, changing each one to say, one here, four here, seven here. Have a percentage that you say, you know what, you, you, you want to have as minimal impact as possible, so you, if you said 25%, you know, to, when you, when you're talking about per hour, and then you're saying, but one per minute, you're kind of changing the goals a little bit, so nobody really can understand, well, now I'm talking 60 per hour. Why not just say 60 or say 70%? That's actually sounds like quite a bit of change. So, for additional information for traffic on Coolidge, you should probably queue times at lights, which is level of service, change in the top speed, which you guys did cover, travel times overall, average per hour, peak AM and PM. So, you're, you want to break down in each subject, so you're showing it, so it's very easy to follow. And, and, and you don't need a decoder ring to tell what each value means, because it's L.L. self-explanatory, and you're going to have predetermined how it changes for good or for better. To track accidents, the metric should provide separate data to cover vehicles, pedestrians, and bicycles, average number of accidents per year for the crash per mile, which works great, because we're doing a mile change, and you can do the overall number, the average per hour, and again, the peak AM and PM hours. If safety is a driving factor for this road diet, I think many could agree that the performance target would see these numbers point down if this is going to be safer. So, the DDA has said that they cannot determine economic success or failure in the period of 20, less than 24 months. So, I say that, that, that information, while it can be included in the report, if they feel there's something that is worth reporting, I don't think it's really important to discuss tonight or while the project starts, because if you've already determined that you can't say success or failure in 12 months, then there's no sense in even spending time building a matrix to measure something that's not measurable. Okay? So, I, I, I think that this, all these numbers that I talked about is something that all should be already, we already have almost all of it. And, and you're talking about a few hours to, a week at the most to put it together and to display it and show it, and say, this is what we have, this is what we're working with, and go forward. Thank you very much, I appreciate the time, and.
Hold on one second, Kurt. So, you, you and I have talked.
Yes, sir.
We, we talked about this, and, and so, just to kind of quickly, because, because we took that into consideration, certainly. Part of the reason why there is a pass/fail metric on some of those, those critical areas is so that there's no obscuring between that negative two and two rating system. It's either it works or it doesn't. I think that's, that's, hopefully, you know, that's very clear. We wanted that, that part to be very clear, so that there was no potentially arbitrary rating system there. And as far as the percentages on the side streets, initially, I was in the same camp, and then when I looked at the numbers, because there's so much variation on the number of cars that travel on those, those roads right now, using the percentage system alone, while it may have made sense for certain numbers, it skewed the other numbers, because the numbers were so disparate to start, and which is how we wanted to really drill down and figure out a way that we could do that, which is where it came to the per minute. And I know that it can be, seem complicated or unnecessary, actually, but I think in reality, it actually does give us, going by experts' numbers, what would be or wouldn't be acceptable.
Right, no, I, I understand that, and like, you know, when you're looking at a 24-hour period, the percentages of change will be different. That's why I said it's important to also look at average per hour, and you would have a variation for that, as well as the peak AM and PM, because those right there would be really where you would see the biggest change, but it would allow you to look at all three scenarios and break it down, and, and, and it allows the regular Joe to look at it and see. And, and I understand the pass/fail things are good, I'm not saying not to include it, but I'm saying when you, when you obscure the other stuff behind negative two to two, it really throws everything off, because then you kind of, you're, you're trying to find another way to define it, and it really doesn't need to be, because there's, there's all numbers that should already be, have been collected, that you can use to say, these were the numbers going in, this is what we expected, however we expected it to change, and this is what's actually happening. And, and, and again, I, I worry that when you're looking at different roads, and you say, well, this one can go up one, but this one can go up seven per minute, or, and I'm not, not saying you said seven, but four to five or whatever, that's a, 60 to 70% is a big change. And if the road, even regardless of whether or not the road is already busy, or regardless of whether or not TIA says, oh, it, it can, it can handle that much more increase, you're really leaving the door open to say, you know what, well, they said it was okay, so it falls within the parameter. I really would, I think that, I mean, if, if it goes up 20, 25 to 30%, and people are not complaining, or, or, you know what, it's handling it pretty well, then you could say, you know what, we said it at this, but it still seems to be pretty good. The level of service at this intersection on the side street is good. You know, you don't have, but to, to set it so high, I mean, to me, I think 70% or almost doubling it is really just a very, we're, we're trying to determine whether or not traffic is being diverted onto the side streets. So, if all these streets are having 45, 50% increase here and there, it actually is being diverted onto the side streets. I think that argument can be made. So, therefore, the percentages, I, I don't want to hear one per minute or five per minute, I should hear 15, 20, 25%. What do you think is acceptable range? And, and that, to me, is where you're, you're setting the thing of, you know, that's how much increase we're, we're, you know, and, and again, if it ended up being 35% or 40%, but it wasn't impacting how, how it felt, then I guess it's okay, but you're, you're still, you're not, you know, almost doubling the, you know, the, the amount of use that the road is getting. Thank you.
Thanks, Kurt.
Charles Terrell from Berkeley again. I'll start on the back page. Numbers nine through 16, those are all pretty squishy. They talk about levels of comfort, and measuring levels of comfort is a very, very difficult thing to do. One of those levels of comfort is using bike lanes, and that's currently at a negative two. There are no bike lanes. How do you come up with a negative two for something that doesn't even exist? You can't have that as your starting point. So, nine through 16 to me are still pretty mushy, pretty fuzzy to get to. Turn back to the front page. Is the Berkeley High School in the DDA? Is it, is it within the district?
No. No.
No. Okay. Well, I noticed that the principal is part of the committee.
This is not a DDA committee.
Well, no, I'm, I'm just, I mean, the high school's not on Coolidge. It's, so I'm, I'm wondering.
An awful lot of traffic on Coolidge during the school hours, probably, it's heavily impacted by the school. I think having him there makes sense.
Okay. Who is the Coolidge business owner, and who are the two residents that are on the committee?
It's great. Two residents have not yet been appointed, but I will be appointing two residents to the committee.
Okay.
Based on just folks who have some vested interests, so, who attended one of our meetings.
Okay, so they, they have not been involved up to now to, for, for, for the starting, for the, for the starting points?
They have not yet for the development of this matrix.
Okay. On number seven, you talked about outliers in terms of speed going on Coolidge. Some of those outliers are likely emergency vehicles.
So, hold on one second, Chuck, before you do, just back to those residents.
Sure.
So, that was a decision that was made that members of council suggested, and I agreed with, that having a couple of residents who are not part of the, would, would make sense, but the reason that they're not there is because that wasn't initially something that was part of the first task force, but we feel it's important to have resident input as opposed to just everybody.
Absolutely, I agree that it's important to have resident input. I would have, hope that they would have been there for the initial point where we're talking about here.
Okay.
Have their input for that initial point, also the Coolidge business owner. But number seven talks about the speed along Coolidge. Matt talked about there are some outliers in terms of the speed studies. From my observation, sitting outside of Tasty Freeze and other, other times along Coolidge, to me, those outliers are generally emergency vehicles. Is there a way to measure those outliers that are running faster than 30, to see if, if indeed they're all emergency vehicles, or are they scofflaws? Is that measurable?
We're working on that exactly right now. Trying to do the same thing. Our, our speed detectors, they're up there as well, also can capture, like, individual spikes, and so, that's one of the things we're working on right now, is to try to remove ambulance and public safety vehicles as being some of those outliers, because you're correct, that could very well be the case.
Okay. Going back to what Kurt was talking about here on number four, I could do the percentages in my head. For the first three, you're talking currently less than 60 vehicles an hour, and you're talking about an acceptable change of an additional 60 vehicles an hour. That's 100% increase. The next one's about a 65% increase. The next two are 50 to 70% increase, if you go up to the full five. If you go up to the full five, instead of the four or the four and a half. Uh, that sounds like a very large increase to me. Doubling, doubling traffic on, uh, Kipling north of Catawba, Kenmore, and Berkeley north of Catawba. That's an awful lot, going up about sixty percent on Kipling south of Catawba, and nearly doubling Beverly, and what is that, about fifty percent increase on Berkeley south of Catawba. Those increases sound very, very high to me for, uh, for side streets. To, to, I mean, in, in effect, doubling, so. Uh, I, I, I would agree it's better than it was. I would disagree that, uh, you're, that it's where it needs to be yet. Uh, I don't recall an actual council vote of, uh, of approval that we want to do this. I remember council voting that they liked the concept, in terms of a concept, but not, this is going to happen no matter what. We just need to get the measurements in place. I don't recall that vote. And if somebody could follow up and get me meeting minutes where that, where there was an actual vote taken to saying, no, this is, this is a done deal. We're going to do this if we can get the metrics in place. Uh, and like I said, I don't think we're still to the place where the metrics are, are really doable.
Okay. Thank you, Chuck.
Hi, Lisa Kempner, Berkeley. Um, so when we went line by line, it was just on the safety stuff. So I guess my first question is, is that because that's what really counts? Like, the other stuff is interesting and good, and it's nice to have a report on it, but the first page, the front of this, is what we really care about. Yes?
From a safety perspective?
Yeah, I mean, like, as far as stopping, or, you know, if it, if...
Certainly with the pass/fail, um, options up there and the safety issues, yes. Those, those are those mission-critical aspects. Again, not saying that the second page is not important, but, um, you know, I, I feel like safety, and according to our public safety, that's where we need to focus here.
Um, and then with the, the traffic volumes, so it's a pass/fail, but there's a number of different streets. So if, if it falls into an acceptable range on all streets but one, is it an average of streets, or does it get a fail if it fails on any one street?
Oh, I thought you hit your hand up, Jack. It was just a, it was a pen click, though. I did touch that.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Baumgartner?
What is, actually, the pass/fail should be carried down through each one, so we'll be, um, evaluating each one under a pass/fail scenario. So it'll get sort of its own, consider it to be a four A, four B, four C kind of thing. So there, we'll be doing a pass/fail on each of those proper, those...
Each of them, yes.
Okay, okay. Um, and then the only thing I'll say about the backside is that, um, there are numbers that make me raise an eyebrow a little bit. I feel like the front has a lot of things that we already have data for, right? We haven't plugged all the data in yet, but, um, if, if you were going to grade those besides a pass/fail, you'd have the data, you'd have the ability to give them a ranking. On the back, most of these you don't, right? There's not been any sort of online survey to say, are you comfortable walking on the street? You see people walking on the streets, so there must be some level of comfort. Um, but to give it a, the worst score, this seems a little eyebrow-raising to me. Um, I would agree that giving a negative two for a bike lane when we don't have a bike lane is probably not the best score, since the, the key says, if you have no data, it's a zero. Um, so I think some of those can probably, should be adjusted a little bit, just kind of for responsibility, right? So that we're really looking and being honest about what the scores are. But overall, way, way, way better than it was.
Thank you. All right, seeing no additional comments, uh, right now. Back to council. Uh, we've heard from some residents, we've obviously gotten a ton of feedback from residents prior to this. Um, any changes from the comments that were made earlier on this, uh, item? I guess Ross will switch back over and start at your end here. If there's anything else that sticks out to you.
Um, no, I guess not anything necessarily that sticks out. I mean, I, I guess on the, on the level of comfort for cyclist portion of it, um, you know, I suppose that, uh, you know, it's based on visual assessments, that kind of thing. But if even taking out using the bike lane terminology kind of potentially solves the problem ahead of time, since, yes, there are no bike lanes, um, and just going level of comfort for cyclists. I mean, I know, again, comfort can be measurably a little bit more difficult, but, uh, that gets maybe a, potentially a little bit closer to where, uh, makes a little bit more sense, given the current situation on Coolidge, so. But otherwise, um, I'm still comfortable moving forward, given the fact that this is, like I said, a vast improvement in terms of the iteration of it.
Councilmember Henin?
Yeah, um, as far as front page versus back, I concentrated exclusively on the front page, just because of the late timing of the delivery, and, and that those are the absolute mission-critical things for me. For me, if excluding vehicle speed, if any of, the rest of them are, um, pass/fail, I'm actually okay if vehicles go faster, but if everything's safer, then, you know, maybe we have the speed limit too low, artificially low. Um, but everything else on this front page is a, if it fails, in my perspective, the entire, um, project has failed. So far as what feels busy, you know, my emphasis on the, um, number of vehicles per hour, um, it isn't, wasn't capacity, what the road could handle, what the road might be handling. It was, you know, the question in my mind was, what gives the perception of feeling busy? And that seemed to be the, um, measurement. Even though sixty percent, a hundred percent, and absolute percentages sounds huge, that is what the traffic experts gave us. And I know for sure, we're never, ever all going to agree on that, but we have to pick something, and I am comfortable with those. However, I, overall, I agree this, um, matrix is not ready. It still needs, um, additional refinement definitions. Um, I know the city manager is working on a narrative document that further expounds on a lot of this and gives more detail, more background information to help make it, uh, more understandable why certain choices were made or, uh, weren't made. I do not think we should hold up starting the road diet. I think we need to rip the Band-Aid off and get it going, um, Monday, you know, at the earliest. But I think we should still be meeting and discussing and collecting input on, um, further refining these. I think we're close, but, uh, they still need some changes. Um, I would propose that we proceed with the road diet, but we continue to meet, take input, and refine this through Tuesday, May twenty-eighth. That's after Memorial Day, and, but way sooner if possible, if we can get it into the public's hands. And then final, final metrics, June third. It would be ideal if we had them done now, if we had them done months ago, but that's not the reality we find ourselves in. And so I want to, uh, give us some time to, you know, not just, well, it's close enough, you know, let's get it, let's get it as good as we can. And it's not going to, um, change the results of the experiment having these just a little bit after the start of the painting.
Councilmember Dean?
I'm fine with, um, moving forward with the metrics as they are today, to councilmember Gavin's point, and Ms. Kempner, the bike lane terminology could be removed. Um, since we don't have them yet, um, I'm not a traffic engineer, I am not a traffic expert. I'm deferring to the experts with this project, and I believe that things are in place, uh, allowing us to move forward with this study. Because that's, at the end of the day, it is a study. And, um, there are going to be things that we're going to learn, that we're going to find out. This is not a done deal, this is, Coolidge will never be changed, this is just the way it is. That's not the case. It is an evaluation, it's a study. So I'm, uh, I'm fine with moving forward as we, in this moment now, thank you.
So I guess I should backtrack, fine moving forward with the posted date?
Yes.
Councilmember again?
Yes.
Councilmember Stedman?
I'm fine with moving forward.
Uh, councilmember Blanchard?
I think if we incorporate some of the things we've talked about here, and like councilman Brennan said, keep refining this. We're never going to get to a hundred percent, but we need to make sure that we all understand, because there's going to be questions on every one of these when we start seeing the numbers, and we'll, so we got to refine it as best we can. And there'll probably be questions at six-month period and a twelve-month period that, uh, we will have to make some judgments on. So I, I think we might as well move forward and, and plan on doing that, best we can.
All right. I am, you know, in agreement that this is a, a better tool than, than previous iterations, and specifically for the mentions that I mentioned, specifically for the items that I mentioned at the beginning, uh, of this, uh, item today. Those, those safety items and the traffic numbers, those, those are incredibly critical elements that previously had the same weight as any other item in the metric, uh, in, in the matrix. And pulling those out and giving concrete numbers, having the raw data out public and for everybody to see, um, is very important before I would be comfortable, before I was comfortable to even get to this point. I, I think that was pretty clear the last time, uh, that I spoke about this. No, it is not yet perfect, but I don't know that it's ever going to be perfect. I think there's always going to be something, especially through hindsight, that we're always going to say, oh, maybe we could have done a little better on this. I, I mean, that being said, I don't disagree that having something as a negative two that we don't have. I'm not entirely sure if that's, um, the way that we should be going. But for me, I, I was also focusing on those page one items. Uh, and so I think we will be able to continue to refine this. But I think I was not going to be comfortable moving forward until I had something in place that I could point to and say, look, this didn't happen. It's not the desired result we wanted, it's not working, at, at, you know, throughout the evaluation period. We have that. We have a very comprehensive matrix that includes a number of other items as well that are certainly important to Coolidge, and to the business owners on Coolidge, and to the residents, uh, that travel on Coolidge. Um, whatever mode they choose to use, those are all important elements. But, but the critical elements, I am much happier with, uh, in this current iteration. And I would, uh, agree with, it seems, uh, all of my, my colleagues up here that delaying the start of the project now does not make as much sense, um, as it did in the past. In the past, there were some very clear questions. I'm comfortable with the answers to those questions now. Uh, I'm comfortable that I have enough tools in my toolbox to really evaluate this, uh, and I am ready to, to finally move forward. With that, I will end our discussion. Uh, and we will move to the next item on our agenda. Uh, Ms. Blanchard, would you please read item number five?
Motion number M thirty-one nineteen, matter of authorizing our approval for the purchase of a new mobile column lift system at a cost, at a total cost of sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and twenty, from account number one zero one four four two nine eight two zero zero zero, garage equipment from CTT Equipment of Midland, Michigan.
Is there a motion to approve M thirty-one nineteen?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve by councilmember Blanchard, with support from councilmember Stedman. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, let's see, moving forward on this, uh, our Department of Public Works has budgeted for this item. They've been looking at a better way to be able to, um, obviously work on their vehicles. This provides a safer alternative to what we have now. Uh, you'll see in the packet what we went through, and, um, we got a couple of different prices on this. Went through the, the typical bidding process for us. Public Safety Director, or Public Work Director, Derek Schuler, provided a memo on this topic, but, uh, Mr. Sean Young, our DPW foreman, is here to answer any technical questions on it.
Good evening.
Sean, thanks for being here.
No, no problem. It's always a pleasure.
Uh, do you have anything additionally you want to add before questions?
Uh, this is a public bid item that was budgeted. The low bidder was CTT Equipment. They gave a reference of Claussen, City Claussen has, there's a couple of other municipalities that have them. We went to visit Claussen, they've had theirs about three years, no problem, service has been good, does everything they need to do. And it's a mobile piece, you can, you know, I can move it to place to place. I'm not trying to bring a truck to, like, a lot of those trucks are large, and to put a hoist, it would be in the way. So this is something I could bring to the truck where it's at and...
Nice.
Be able to do the service.
Excellent. Are there questions for Mr. Young? Councilmember Blanchard? Hope you did your homework, Sean.
Yeah. No, this is a couple of easy ones. Sean, is this going to replace something we've got now, or to be in addition to?
This is in addition to. Some of our larger trucks and buses are just too long for the, the old equipment. It's just physically, they don't fit.
Okay, so we will continue to keep that and use that for the smaller equipment, and...
Yeah, well, it's, they're midsize for your pickups and your, like, your eighty-five-hundred, seventy-five-hundred type trucks.
Okay. Uh, is there a safety inspection requirement on these, since they're all six individual units?
Yeah, typically we have them, every year we have our hoist inspected. And they would come out, CTT would come out and do the inspection.
Is that, is that, is, is that included in the contract for the first year or so, or is that...
Well, the first year when it's new, you don't have it, but the, the first inspection's not included.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Anything else? No?
Looks nice.
Well, thank you, Sean. Uh, it looks nice, thank you.
Picture is really great.
It's pretty.
Thank you, uh, thank you for being here, Sean, to, uh, answer any questions and provide, um, additional background on this. Um, seeing no additional questions for you, it doesn't appear that there are any out there either. Um, Ms. Blanchard, would you please call the roll on M thirty-one nineteen?
Stedman?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
And Turack?
Yes. Um, Ms. Blanchard, would you please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R ten nineteen, matter of considering a renewal of a contract with Oakland County for property assessing services from July first, two thousand nineteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two.
Is there a motion to approve R ten nineteen? So moved.
Support.
Moved by councilmember Henon, something spilled over there.
That was...
Uh, support from councilmember Blanchard?
It's going very well.
Mr. Baumgartner, we okay?
Yes.
By a thread, sir, by a thread. I jumped, so.
Uh, so this is a renewal, almost the, the exact same language that we've had in the past. It's been reviewed by a city attorney, uh, a little bit of background for, for many, many years now. Uh, the city has provided assessing services through Oakland County's Equalization Division. Uh, we would like to continue that, uh, the, the amounts indicated in the, the resolution, as well as the, uh, the attached memo as well. Oakland County continues to do a very good job for us. It's literally a team of people that, that service this need for us. So the, the flip side would be providing the service in-house, which, uh, has just not made sense for us. Fiscally, we've been incredibly happy, not only with their, their assessing work, but their management of our board reviews, the, uh, the access information that we have, the team, uh, within equalization. It really does, it's a fantastic and very, uh, very lucrative, not lucrative, but, uh, functionally, it does very well for, for our needs here. And I, you know, our finance department has taken a look at this, I've taken a look at this, city, uh, city attorney as well, and we'd all like to recommend approval of this renewal.
There's one percent increase each for three years.
Yes, sir.
Uh, additional questions on this, or any questions, I should say, on this item? Talking about assessing?
As long as the city attorney's approved it.
I have.
It is a very boring document.
Yes, yes, yes.
I don't know.
Okay. Uh, seeing no, uh, questions, additional questions? Ms. Blanchard, would you please call the roll on R ten nineteen?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Oh, yes.
And Turack?
Yes. R ten nineteen has been approved. Uh, Ms. Blanchard, would you please read item number seven on tonight's agenda?
Ordinance number O zero four nineteen, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance to add new Article twelve residential grading and drainage standards to Chapter twenty-six Buildings and Building Regulations of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances to establish standards for residential grading and drainage, and to prescribe a penalty for violations.
Is there a motion to approve O zero four nineteen?
Motion to approve.
Support, motion to approve by councilmember Dean, with support from councilmember Henon. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, for a rather long time, we've had a code that has not suited our needs well, and has caused a number of issues that have, uh, and by extension, a number of residents have had to come to, to this body to voice their, their displeasure with the way that we've managed stormwater, particularly on new construction, and in the opportunities where we've had the chance to enforce regrading on a property, we've been very specific on, on focusing, really just on the property that's being improved, and making sure that all that water flows towards the street where it can be collected through the surface drains. Obviously, as, as, the more we've gotten into this, the more conversations I've had with, with council, as well as members of the public at large, residents, we have seen that a change is, is well warranted, and so we, with our new partnership with, with McKenna, and as well as utilizing the background from our, our engineers, HRC, we bring forth to you a, we think, a reasonable, um, a change to the grading standards, and one that people will be very happy to end up next to over time. There's a short presentation that's been presented. You've got the, the text of the, the ordinance itself in here, so Mr. McLean is able to sort of run you through this quick item here.
And I've got your Okay, so we've had the same standards in place since, I believe, it was 1981 with the, the current grading standard. Do I have to hit a? Oh, got it. Thank you.
That was quick. Thank you.
Okay, so looking at the past 10 years, we've seen a rash of new constructions. It's exciting to have new constructions. Shows we've moved beyond the recession. I like what our current standard was trying to accomplish. You know, with, with the new builds, your water would be directed out to the street. You wouldn't be flowing onto the neighbors. You know, however, you've solved one problem, but you've potentially created numerous problems where the natural flow of water can be disrupted, you know. With, with a raised grade on a new build, you can essentially create a, a dam around your, your neighbors, and then all of a sudden, you know, they're flooding. And so it's, it was time to look at options at, at going in a new direction. You saw the current standard. Basically, you know, your, your raised grades on your new build, you know, again, they cause flooding. It can cause inadequate drainage of surface waters, you know, for several properties around a new build. I think this is, you know, a complaint we've heard a lot. So we've come up with some potential changes that, you know, move us, move us in a better direction. Basically, your, your new standard would apply to any residential development, you know, affecting the land outside of the structure. The proposed changes would require that the property be graded in such a way that there is no increase in the amount of surface water, you know, flowing onto adjoining properties. You know, you can still flow, but you can't increase. We would also require that a developer submit a detailed plan indicating how any additional water flow, you know, would be managed. To verify that a finished grade is, is matching the approved site plan, you know, where we would like to require AS-Built drawings, you know, be submitted to the building department, you know, when the project is completed. And those, those plans would be prepared by a registered civil engineer, architect, or land surveyor. This would require some additional review through our consultants at, at HRC. Last year, council did approve an ordinance allowing for escrow accounts for additional review for, for site plans and things. And so the, the fees for the engineering services through HRC would be covered by, by that escrow, by the developer. Any questions? We have a senior building official, Jim Wright from McKenna here, for any specific questions related to, to building codes. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Tim. I'm, I'm sure that I'm not only speaking for myself when I say this is obviously something we've had to deal with on a all way-too-frequent basis. And it's also not, it's not the case every time. There, there, but there are cases where, for whatever reason, we find ourselves in a situation where we have a new structure built, and we have a grading problem that we have to retroactively try to fix, which is not easy to do, and costly, and takes time. Uh, and, and I believe that is the impetus for this. Where did these new, and maybe Mr. Wright, you can, you can speak to this. Where did, where did these new standards come from? Are they, you know, did we look to other, you know, maybe our neighboring municipalities? See how they handled these situations, or are these kind of new?
We did look at what our neighbors were doing. Some of the language was based on grading and drainage standards for the City of Wixom, which I believe McKenna helped write. We've had some discussions, Jim Wright, myself, the city manager, and staff from HRC. So it's, uh, the language that was developed was, some of it came from neighboring communities. Some of it came from discussions, you know, we, we had internally.
Okay. Thank you, Jim, for being here. Do you want to add any, anything? Talk a little bit about the, the process and how we got here?
Not unless you have any specific questions on it. It's just that this is not an unusual problem in multiple communities. When you have new residential construction, especially in Berkeley, which tends to have smaller lots, and we're building larger houses, it becomes harder to control the water so it don't affect the neighbors. So this is the attempt we're trying to make to be able to control that. You're ahead of it. We're still allowing the building. We're allowing the builder to come up with solutions for the drainage problems. It's just that now we're assisting the neighbors and also the future of Berkeley and the infrastructure by putting these standards in place.
Uh, thank you. Questions for Mr. Wright?
This is a question for, um, for Mr. Baumgartner. If we pass this tonight and, or in two week, or two weeks when we finalize it, how does that affect current owners of houses that have flooded properties from new builds?
This, this will be the ordinance moving forward. There's not, so the, up to this point, we've complied with existing ordinance, a different set of standards that, that were passed and approved by city council. And so it won't be have a, a retroactive effect. It'll be, uh, it'll be having an effect on site plans moved from that point forward.
Okay, thank you.
I think just to clarify, I mean, it will certainly affect new builds. It can also affect existing construction to the extent that there are modifications made that change the, the grade of the land or, or the drainage course. But it, but if there are no changes to a property, then, as the manager said, it does not apply retroactively, does not require existing property owners to go back and change something about their property.
Okay, thank you.
I was merely gonna note, from a process standpoint, you'll see appearing on the Planning Commission Agenda, the repeal of grading standards. Those, for whatever reason, ended up as a zoning code. This is, the set of standards are gonna be complete in, in what's being proposed here, making the zoning portion of this irrelevant. So we're not passing with one body and, and disapproving with another. It is merely an attempt at setting a single standard here. I apologize for not saying that earlier.
Thank you. Additional questions?
Yes, um, the proposed new standard would require that a regraded property on a residential new build may not increase the amount of surface water runoff onto adjacent properties. So, um, I guess I'm just wondering how that's measured, other than, oh my gosh, we're flooding. You know, I mean, that, like, there's normal runoff, you know, we all have that. So I guess, what's the measure?
Well, the way that's typically done is the engineer, who's gonna provide this stuff, will also provide for us the amount of additional, what they call impervious surface. When you have a larger structure, you have roofs, you have pavement, you have garages. These type of things, they're impervious. So you can measure the amount of additional water that's gonna be created by those impervious surfaces. And that amount of additional water is gonna have to, what's gonna have to be shown, how it's gonna be taken care of.
Okay.
The regular rainwater, the, the normal stuff that was already there, has its natural flow. What we're asking for our builders to do is to show how they're gonna control the additional, which can be measured by the impervious surface.
So it's a math problem?
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
Engineers figure out
Everything.
these things, and actually, this ordinance is grounded in what has long been the, the common law in this country, that one cannot increase drainage onto one's neighbor's property beyond the, the natural flow, or sometimes called the agricultural rate. Nor can your downstream neighbor do anything to obstruct the natural flow from your property. So between the drawings and the, the engineers and land surveyors looking at these things, they can mathem- mathematically determine what that natural flow is and what the proposed changes in grade might do to impact that. I take their word for it, but
Yep.
they, they, they come up with those calculations.
Great. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Our current zoning, impervious surface requirements, you know, maximum standards, that's not going to change. We're still going to, you know, have those in place. All right, and, um, uh, this discusses that, um, the structures shall be constructed at an elevation of the average grade unless otherwise approved. I've witnessed some new buildings where they have all their basement filled, and they just seem to pile it up and then build on top of that. And we have, you know, what's already a pretty large towering house next to a bungalow, really towering. So is this going to help with that issue?
Yes, it should. What builders and what new homeowners like to have is a nice, tall basement. Berkeley has a high-water table. You also have neighbors in their bungalow-type homes where the finished floor height is set at a certain average, and we got a grade set at a certain average. The ordinance calls out for a specific maximum roof height. So what builders may tend to do is they may raise the grade up so they can accomplish and comply with the average roof height. Now, by us considering the average grade and also the finished floor heights of the neighboring property, we can take, we can eliminate that problem with these taller homes with the grade also being raised. So we'll have compliance with the average, the, the roof height, and also with the grading issues.
Excellent. I'm very happy to see that. This is, uh, residential grading standards. Do we have, already have commercial standards that will protect anyone that's a budding, a commercial district?
Not established, sorry, not established in our zoning ordinance, but I believe that would be covered through the, the Michigan Building Code.
Okay. I think I'll wanna follow up on that to make sure that, you know, where we have that interface, that we're still protecting commercial versus residential. I haven't heard that as a complaint, but wanna make sure it's
Sure. I, I can actually add a little bit to this, push, push the conversation. As I've been mentioning, Water Resource Commissioner's Office has been working on drainage standards. Those have been really geared towards commercial applications, parking lots, and things like that. And so I think we'll see, and we'll have the opportunity, I would like to say, probably within this calendar year, to take a look at commercial standards and upgrade them to best practices in incorporating green infrastructure. And that should really reduce the amount of runoff that we see in a lot of these properties.
Okay. And then, uh, my final issue, I think, is more one for council to decide. This is, you know, we are wanting to move towards a civil infraction model, and this is listed as a misdemeanor. So I don't know if, um, from, from the building officials' perspective, if it is a more useful tool for it to be a misdemeanor, or from our perspective, if we want it to be a civil infraction.
If I may weigh in, if Mr. Wright doesn't mind. Actually, when I was assisting Tim with, uh, putting some of the, the finer points into the ordinance, including that, I thought that this ordinance would be ideal to, to be a municipal civil infraction. The reason I did not incorporate that, though, is because we haven't, as a city, made that, that move, and I, I didn't think you'd wanna do it piecemeal, but I figured at, at the point when the city does, when the city council decides to, I'll use the word decriminalize, um, some of our building and zoning code-type things, this would be one of the ordinances that I would recommend you consider for municipal civil infraction treatment. It makes sense to me because one of, one of the principal tools and reasons why you might favor municipal civil infractions is it does give the court the authority, actually, to, the injunctive power to be able to order corrections and cures to be implemented to, to enforce compliance. And that's exactly what you want with this type of ordinance.
All right. Um, yeah, I'm com- with that, I'm comfortable leaving it a misdemeanor, you know, as we, you know, yeah, moving forward. And just overall, I am very pleased with this, and I'm glad that we finally have this in front of us.
Any other comments?
Just a comment. I think it's, it's about time. We need this really bad.
Yeah, and, uh, thank you both for being here, and Jim, thank you for providing some input. Appears we have a resident.
Charles Terrill from Berkeley, a couple of questions. Does this change, I didn't see it in there, allow for onsite detention and retention of stormwater for a single-family and dual-family residential? Because right now, that is excluded.
We're leaving the door open for the, the builders to show how they're gonna control this additional water on their property. We don't want to dictate to a builder how he's gonna control the water. It'll be up to them to provide that, and our engineer would look at the feasibility of it for that particular property. It's gonna be unique to each individual property and how they wanna control that water.
Right. The ordinance doesn't, doesn't require it, nor does it prohibit it.
Okay. Uh, in terms of, uh, actual implementation, what I understood in the presentation is that after the build is done, you're gonna get an AS-Built and then review the AS-Builts. So there is going to be no inspection. Is that correct?
Why would there be no inspections?
Well, once the AS-Built is provided, the engineer, that, that is part of the inspection. An engineer goes out, shoots all the grades on it, and gives that information to us. Then the city engineer would verify that also.
Okay, that, that was not clear on the presentation.
Just for clarification, too, that's really the endpoint. I mean, before, before the work is done, there will be the plan, the plan review, and so on. The, the AS-Built and added inspection is basically to verify that they've, they've built and compared, done it in
The presentation did not include an inspection. It just talked about reviewing the AS-Builts.
I understand.
To go to councilmember Stedman's question about being retroactive, I understand the answer that she got so far was not for completed structures. Is that correct? What about builds that are currently under construction at the time that this becomes effective?
City Attorney did amend my comments to, to make sure those were included as well. So final structures wouldn't be part of this, but there are structures that are currently under construction that would fall under this ordinance.
So then, those that are currently under construction would have to comply with this? Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, unless, unless, those
Continuing to change.
Yeah, those under current construction that have already been through the permitting process and have had their plans approved are essentially vested, and they'll con- continue. What I was referring to is someone who, you know, has an existing home. You have an existing home, and you decide you're adding on a bedroom addition that's going to affect the grade and the drainage. That would be subject to this ordinance requirement.
That'd be new construction, new addition.
Right.
What I'm talking about is, use that house on, on Royal as an example. It's currently under construction. The grading is not done. Would that, would that new build then be under this? Or is that grandfathered in since they've already been permitted?
I think that one's already in process. I, I see Director McLean kinda sneaking up there, and maybe I'll defer to him to explain.
Yes, uh, the building plans for that property, they were approved by a previous Yes, the building plans for that property, they were approved by a previous building official, it was last, last summer, early fall.
Right. So then, they would not be, they would not be under obligation to meet these standards?
I believe
Any of the other, I mean, that's just one. There's, I've seen lots of houses under construction currently, so you're telling me that they're already grandfathered in and that this
They've received permits and approvals, and those give them the right to proceed.
They were permitted and approved under the
Right, they were, they were in compliance with the laws that were enforced at the time, right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions on this? Oh, certainly.
David Oliver with Oliver Construction, Berkeley citizen. This is a problem that's kind of near and dear to my heart. I've been dealing with it for 30 years plus. And one question I have is when we go in and acquire a property that essentially has served as a drainage field for other properties, a property that hasn't been maintained through the years, is, sits low and catches other people's water, we as buyers and builders of that property, we become responsible for maintaining all other properties around its water flow? Is that how this is going to work?
Mr. Wright?
The way the ordinance is written is, talks about average grades around the property. So if you have a lower property already, and what you're proposing to do doesn't negatively affect the neighbors, we're taking an average grade, it was something that could be considered working with the builders to be able to make improvements to the lot. The purpose of the ordinance is to not negatively affect the neighbors and not to change the original flow of water that was in those properties. And this is something that we'd work with the engineer on, there might be some history going further back that actually showed the way the natural flow went, and this lot had settled, there might have been some work done on it in the past. Typically, we'd have a demolition of a home, you end up with a lower grade, you have a settling, which creates a ponding. So all those things will be taken into consideration. So the key thing is that we're looking at the average grades around, we want to make sure that we're not going to negatively affect the neighbors, and we're not going to negatively affect the current flow of water on the properties.
Okay. But if I take a home that sits low and then bring it to the average of those around me, I'm going to push water in that direction.
Then you'd have to figure out how to control that water on your property.
So in a sense, we do become managers of all flow of water on all other properties.
You've got to control the additional water that's coming from the impervious surface and grade on your property.
Impervious surfaces are easy to control because they are real systems that can be controlled by gutters, downspouts, driveways. That's easy. It's these low-lying areas that become difficult to control. They are incense, they are catch basins for other people's properties. So when we go to average our grade, we then raise it up to everybody else, and everybody else takes a little more water.
Yeah, well, that's what's, that is what the purpose of this ordinance is, because then we don't want to affect the other neighbors. So as a builder, if you know what the condition of the lot is, you're taking that responsibility down when you purchase it, so you're going to have to show us how you're going to control that additional water. There's options there, it's not saying that we're not, that the engineer and the building staff would not consider raising the grade, but you're going to have to show us how you're going to control that water flow that's going to come off that property from raising the grade.
I'm much more clear on this now. I do want council to consider the impact that this will have on builders as a whole. It will add thousands to their projects between the engineering, the design systems of sewers and flows. It will ultimately lower the number of new construction projects that enter the city. It will raise the, it will lower the transfer. If someone has a property to sell and it sits low, it just became a lot less valuable than the one next to it, the tie. So will it impact people throughout the city in ways that may not have been considered yet? It's going to be something that all of us as builders are going to have to be careful with, because we are now engineers for the city's drainage systems.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Nancy Stemmick, 1259 Princeton in Berkeley. As someone who has been flooded out by a new build, I think this is a responsibility the city should have taken a long time ago. These complaints have been coming for years, and, but yet, nothing was done. And so I continue to flood because of the high grade of the property next to me. It's the builder's responsibility to stop that from happening, and the city's. And while I don't like to see someone's property become less valuable, I know mine did because of the new build next to it. And we can't manage the water. The grade is just too high, and we're being flooded out again this spring. We were assured that the drains and the gutters and all the crap that they put in would help, and it didn't. We flooded again. We've already spent thousands of dollars protecting the house. The yard is probably a waste. I've worked in that yard for 20 years, bringing in soil, amending the soil, and I lost it all. So I'm not very sympathetic to the builders that come into this city if they can't manage their water. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Seeing nobody else coming up to the microphone, no other questions or comments from council. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on O-0419, please?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. Would you please read item number eight on tonight's agenda?
Ordinance number O-0519, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance to amend section 106.37 of chapter 106 Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places to regulate sidewalk obstructions and add Article 7 Construction-Demolition Site Standards to chapter 106 Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places to the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances to establish standards for enclosing, protecting, and maintaining construction and demolition sites, and to prescribe a penalty for violations.
Is there a motion to approve O-0519? So moved.
Support.
Removed by Councilmember Gavin, support for Councilmember Stedman. Mr. Baumgart?
Ladies Mayor, much in, much in the, continuing the conversation from our, from our previous agenda item, again, working with McKenna as they bring some of their best practices and their experience across many, many different communities now, and talking, we're talking with them about some of these specific issues that we've seen across our, our community with, with new build construction. We worked together to come up with a set of standards to update our existing ordinance in order to, to be a little bit more effective in our, in the way that we manage these construction sites, and the hammer that we have to swing when, you know, we have a, we have a bad actor out there. So I hope that you'll see that many of these construction standards answer a lot of the questions that we've had. These specifically address many of the complaints that we've seen, as well as help us go a little bit farther in making sure that our builders are good neighbors by default, instead of just having a handful of them that we're really proud of, and several of them that we have nothing but issues with. We want to raise the entirety of the standard of our developers, and, you know, hopefully they all sort of follow the good example of some of our really good builders out there. You'll see in the packets, there's the copy of the ordinance itself, as well as a memo from the, from Community Development Director Tim McCain, or Tim McLean, sorry. And then also, he's prepared a presentation on this as well.
Take it away.
Get this to... There we go. So one of the first things we looked at is the issue of sidewalk obstructions. Some of the most consistent feedback, you know, we received from, from residents and council members is that they want to see sidewalks open at all times. So we want to limit the amount of time that there's, you know, any closures, you know, during, during residential construction. So one of the changes we're proposing is that a builder keep a minimum of five walk, five feet of sidewalk space clear. You know, in the situations where the sidewalk is disturbed or damaged, we would require a builder to utilize crushed aggregate or cold patch to allow for unobstructed passage on the sidewalk. So that's, that's a change that, that we're proposing. Additionally, we've looked at some construction site standards. Specifically, one of the things that we felt was necessary was a requirement that chain leak fencing be placed around a residential construction site. You know, the standards that we've had in the past, you know, you've had the, the orange, you know, kind of the, the snow fencing, and it falls down a lot. That's something that happens pretty consistently. So, you know, requirement that there's rigid fencing is something that I think is going to increase safety around those, around those residential construction sites. Additionally, we wanted to add language that would require that any portable toilets on a construction site not be placed on, you know, the sidewalk or the right-of-way. They have to be placed, you know, within the construction site, and a minimum of 10 feet, you know, from adjacent structures on adjoining properties. Construction site debris is, is something we've, we've dealt with a lot, and so we wanted to have a standard that requires that refuse container be placed in a location that's approved by the building official. Additionally, builders would be required to, to empty those containers as, you know, as soon as they get full. We want to deter rodents and, you know, other, other vermin from, from being on those sites. The ordinance also allows for the city to require silt fencing, you know, if, if the building official feels that there's a potential issue with soil and sediment runoff, he can say, you know, hey, you know, you have to put in silt fencing. We want to keep this, keep this stuff from, from running onto the neighbors. You know, again, the, the intent of the proposed changes is to enhance safety on our residential sidewalks and our residential construction sites. You know, we want to maintain pedestrian access to the sidewalk, we want to keep our construction sites clean, and obviously, we want to maintain the aesthetic appeal in the residential areas. So that's, that's the intent behind the, the changes. Technology issues here, uh, any questions?
Councilmember Dean?
Yes, when you reference keeping the sidewalk clear, so pedestrians can walk, does that mean if there's snow, it's removed? If there's ice, that's taken care of? Do people pile debris in the sidewalk, or?
We've, we've had issues in the past with materials being stored on the sidewalk.
Oh.
And so that's, that's something, we want to keep those, keep those clear.
Okay.
Sometimes when there's deliveries, you know, the, the trucks are going up over the sidewalk, it can, you know, cause damage, so, you know, we'll want to see cold patching or crushed aggregate, so that allows for, for safe passage.
Okay. And then, what is silt fencing? I don't know what that is.
Silt fencing is intended to prevent soil and sediment runoff. It, it's fencing that kind of goes, it's under, kind of under the ground, it's kind of difficult to, I wish I had a slide that kind of showed, you know, how it works, but it's basically, it'll keep runoff from going, say, like onto a sidewalk, or spilling onto a neighbor's property.
So it keeps it contained?
Yes.
But you can't really see it, it's underneath?
It's only partially buried to, to prevent water flow underneath it. Ah. And so it is partially buried, and so water can basically pass through it or flow around it, but essentially, what it does is keep mud and clays and silts
Okay.
and debris off the sidewalk to make the sidewalks more navigable.
Thank you.
Additional questions for Mr. McLean? Yes. Councilmember Henan?
Yes, several questions again, and just comments for maybe some improvements. First, I want to say I am really happy with this. This is, I think, great, and my criticisms are small issues, they are no- nothing major with it. We had the discussion of them having a city-approved sign at the fence. What about a permit board, you know, for stickers so people can see, you know, what permits have been pulled, when inspections have been passed, and so on?
I think that's, that's something I think we can definitely do. You know, you're referring to, say, you know, once, kind of gives an update of like where, where they are in the inspection process?
Yeah, you can often see, I know our current ordinance is, it has to be, inspections have to, or the stickers have to be visible from, I think, the street or whatnot, you know, so it lets people know, is this site in compliance? Are there any violations? You know, has there been a stop work order issued? So, you know, if they, and, you know, in that case, if they see someone working there, you know, it's like, hey, let's call someone about this, you know, so.
I, I believe we are still providing builders with those boards, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and so that's, it's, we, we are providing them, they're especially useful for inspectors when there is nothing to stick a sticker to, and so making sure that they stay out there through the remainder of the build, even after a structure's in place, is something we could easily transition to.
And it's got the contact information for the, the contractors as well?
Yeah, which I find very important for neighbors in the area, you know, who they know who to call if something isn't getting cleaned up, you know, besides just the city. Talk about the fencing remaining up until the doors and windows are in. I would probably suggest also until any excavations are filled. I know that if the windows and doors are up, probably the excavations are filled in, but perhaps not, and maybe even just additionally, until the site's deemed safe, if there is some other condition they've got going on, you know, so just gives you, gives the building official the power to say, well, this part still is not safe, so, you know, we're not going to let the fence come down yet.
How we've approached this in the past is that once, once the windows and doors are installed, it's, the building is considered secure. So that's, that's kind of where, where we were going with, with that standard.
Okay. I, I look at it as a, from a attractive nuisance standard, you know, I don't want, you know, kids, you know, to be attracted to whatever the unsafe condition is, you know. When our house was being built, I jumped on the bulldozer and got a picture of myself, so, you know, the things such as that, that probably shouldn't be doing. Accessory structures, a garage is considered an accessory structure, correct?
Yes, the detached garage is, is considered accessory structure. Attached garage is considered part of the dwelling unit.
Yeah. So in the case of a detached garage, and, you know, some of them can be pretty big, again, could be that attractive nuisance, could be easily accessible from a corner lot, so I would be interested in seeing some provisions to maybe take care of those sorts of situations where it could be an unsafe condition, that we would want the fencing up to keep people out. I don't know, I don't know how often it would actually happen in practice, but something I want to consider. Excavations, we, there's no disco, we've had problems in the past with excavation collapses, so should we have, be talking about preventing them here, or the remedies if one should happen? You know, how we would address that?
Well, that's, as far as excavations go, that's something, Jim, you might be able to answer that better than I'm, I'm able to, as far as remedies.
Collapse of excavations happen basically for two different reasons. One is flooding and water issue, and one is improper excavation. The best practices and code standards have the way you're supposed to do an excavation, and where you tier it back, and the spills are held certain back, you don't have straight walls, and that kind of thing. Typically, you don't have that type of problem. I do know myself, I was involved with a collapse here in Berkeley a year or so ago, where we had to solve a problem with that, and it was just due to not following best practices. We are going to require fencing around excavations, so it's going to protect those type of situations. But if you do get into a serious collapse, that is possible offense to go in. But there's really no, a collapse is usually found after the fact. Builders come in, they typically dig, dig the hole. Builders come in, they typically dig, dig the hole in the day, they get, you know, the fences up. We come and do a footing inspection a day or two later to see it and that's when we can see possibly if there's an excavation problem. It really isn't logistically a way for the city to prevent a collapse, but we're hoping with the use of the fencing around the property, around the excavation, that at least it'll help maintain any possibility of the public being affected by that collapse happening.
One situation we've had in the past that I'd like to see if we can find a remedy for is when a collapse has happened and often because of our small lots, it has undermined a neighbor's driveway. And it is sometimes taking a very long time for, and sometimes a lot of fight to get that remedied. What tools do we have? Do we have the tools needed to make sure if that happens, that it is, nothing else is happening on that site until that neighbor is made whole?
In the building code, it specifically gives the building official the authority to, he has a lot of authority and he can ask for very specific information on how a situation can be taken care of or remedied. I was involved, like I said, I was involved in a collapse a little, a little over a year ago where I was working with our building official at the time and I required some engineering to provide for how they're going to support the cell. It was right next to a garage and then it was garage was ready to go in and undermine the footing. So, it was important from my aspect to make sure that we predict that resident, that we have some sort of engineer fill provided, which required an engineer document to show that how this is going to done, the proper compaction. Those type of things are within the authority of the building official to request based on the seriousness of the collapse.
Okay.
Those are already in the code that this, the village, the city has already adopted.
Okay. And I'll encourage you to use that tool.
Yeah, me most so.
We recently had the tree standards passed and so, the tree ordinance. And is there any use? Does it help? Does it matter if that or others similar were included by reference into this ordinance?
I think that would be something the attorney would probably want to address. It's, it is a separate, it is a separate ordinance. From, from a building standpoint, from a view standpoint, we look at both ordinances to make sure compliance is, is achieved.
So, probably not a use. You know, I think it's optional. It's not a requirement because one is obligated to, you know, to comply with all ordinances in the code book. But if council believes that just an ounce of, you know, precautions worth a, a pound of cure and to include another reference to the tree ordinance in this section or this article, rather, I don't see a problem with that.
I think I'm comfortable without. And then, the final question I had is just similar to before. Do we have comparable commercial standards that will protect people abutting commercial districts?
The building code is, there's a whole chapter that's very specific, the Michigan Building Code, not the Michigan Residential Code. The Michigan Building Code is very specific on safety standards for commercial projects. And we, we pulled, as a matter of fact, we pulled some of those standards into the residential ordinance. So, once again, the city by reference with the building code has a lot of latitude enforcing safety along, around commercial buildings as far as walkways, on sidewalks, when there's overhead work done, facade work, that type of thing is very specifically addressed in the building code.
I did just remember two additional questions I had thought of. Storage of materials, we talk about them being neat and orderly, but I want to make sure they aren't, folks aren't using the right of way for the storage of their materials. Is that covered under anything existing?
It was covered right now under the new ordinance that we're proposing. Now, when you brought that question up, one thing, being a builder myself in the past, there are certain things that get dropped off on a site that are hard to control immediately. There are what they call apprentices on site that help move materials around once the job gets, but let's take for example, the delivery of roof trusses on a job site. You have a large truck that drops off these trusses on a small lot. So at times when they drop this off, it comes across, it may go across the sidewalk for a short period of time, but then this could be the responsibility of that builder with his crew to make sure those trusses are moved in an area where they have access to so they complete the building. I want to emphasize, we're not trying to put an additional burden on the builders. We appreciate the builders and what they're doing for the city, but at the same time, we need to protect the residents. So it's going to be a little bit of a cooperation that's going to be needed at the time when these trusses are dropped off. They may come on a Friday afternoon, Fri, there might not be an opportunity to get those trusses moved till a Monday. And I think that is something that as a city and code enforcement officer, we want to look at and expect them to get taken care of, but at the same time, it's, these are a lot, large objects that do take time to move.
Right, and I, I completely understand that there has to be a little bit of give and take, but it is, it is when it comes a long-term storage issue is.
It's got to be, right, they have to store properly within that fenced-in area.
Yeah.
Typically, as city manager bum were brought out, the good builders here in the city, when lumber's brought, they break the lumber package down, they stack it neatly because it's advantageous for them to know what material they need at a particular time. And that's usually taken care of very well. But once again, there are some that need a little coaxing and that's what we're working for.
And then, similar to Mr. Tyrell's question before, are these retroactive? Will we be able to, you know, an existing site that's under development, can we say we need to put the fence up now?
Once I believe this should be an attorney question, but my opinion, if you're asking is, this is an ordinance regulating the site. These type of things aren't included in a plan review or a permit that's issued. So we don't have a pre-standing, already approved site as far as a plan review goes or a project goes. So I would think that once this ordinance is adopted, those would apply, once it's adopted, apply immediately to any project that's going on at that time.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with those comments, unlike the, the prior one that would actually affect the, the layout and, and implementation of the project. What we're talking about here is just the, the means of, of moving forward with the construction process and these are public safety type things. I mean, obviously, we're going to use some discretion in the way we, we implement it, but these, these regulations seem like the type of things that we would want to put into effect immediately for all ongoing construction projects as well as future projects.
Okay. And city staff as well as McKenna's inspection crew did actually have a, a meeting earlier at the onset of the construction season to discuss with them that new standards are coming. I believe a little bit of a preview was given even and so, this is, should be a surprise to, to nobody who has either attended that meeting or has been doing construction progress within the city up to this point.
Yeah, I would think we will want to, you know, have some type of educational process. This isn't intended to be a gotcha kind of ordinance where we're all going to start passing out tickets. We want compliance, not, not punishment.
Yes, all right. Thank you everyone for your patience.
Are there any other questions, Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Hannon on the, the one in particular about the fencing being removed. I think that the, there should be three words in, in the last part of that fencing says, as such sign, the windows and doors are installed on the building and the site is safe, fencing may be removed. I think that covers everything there, so.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Anybody have, any councilmembers have problems with adding those words?
No.
Thank you again, both of you for, for being here. Now, you know, this is a, a situation where, you know, looking at, may look like this is trying to, you know, be some sort of punitive measure from the developers in the city of Berkeley. I can tell you that it is not the case. It's, it's more a, a situation where, I liken it to a classroom and teachers kind of getting fed up with the students and says, if anybody else makes a sound, you know, we're staying 10 minutes after. And somebody invariably goes out and makes a sound and the whole class gets punished. It's kind of a situation where we have some, have had at least some developers in the city who have not been respectful neighbors or necessarily respectful of our expectations and it is incumbent upon us to make sure that those expectations are crystal clear for everybody and they're going to be applied to everybody equally.
Or construction or demolition.
We're going to hear it right now. And that's where we are today. We have to make it very clear what our expectations were. This is meant to assist, you know, the developers and not having potential questions or folks coming up, you know, asking, why are you doing this? Why are you not doing this? I mean, we want to make sure that everybody is pretty clear on, on, on what the rules are and we all play by the same rules at the same time. We are protecting our residents who want to walk across sidewalks or who have, you know, want to know what's going on and certainly keeping the site safe from excavation or those, those structures that look like they're fun to play in, but they're really not safe. So I, I think this does go a long way towards making sure that that is aware. I'm glad to hear that this is not the first time that maybe folks who do business in the city are hearing of these expectations. I think if you've driven around the city, if anybody's really paid attention, you've already seen some of this in play already, so. From that standpoint, I am comfortable and, and ready to move forward. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on 00519?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Enter Brian.
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the next item on tonight's agenda?
Communication starting with Councilmember Henan.
Councilmember Henan.
All right. The Environmental Committee did not meet, but they'll have their next meeting on Thursday, May 23rd, starting at 6:30 PM at the Public Safety Building. However, Huntington Woods is holding a electronic recycling day that our committee's going to be helping out with. They'll take electronics, they'll take scrap metal, there'll also be self-service shredding if you have any materials you want to shred. So that is Sunday, May 19th, from noon to four, and that's at the Huntington Woods Public Safety Yard on 11 Mile. Then, the Tree Board Meeting is, meets next Monday, a week from today, the 13th, from 7 to 8 at the library. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gannon?
Thank you, Your Honor. There was no ZBA meeting and there isn't one scheduled for this month. There's no variance have come before. The Coolidge Task Course met and did discuss the proposed lane reduction along with the matrix associated with that, that we obviously had a, a discussion about tonight. And the Planning Commission met and discussed a couple topics. One, capital improvements plan that will be part of this year's budget and did recommend approval to council. Also recommended approval of a site plan review for public safety expansion to accommodate the new fire truck that's going in there. Planning Commission also recommended approval of the actual boundaries that would constitute the design overlay district. And there was also a discussion about the city's childcare ordinance and revisiting to determine practicality within the downtown. So, it was a very robust discussion and a lot of good points, so, well done to Planning Commission. So, that's all I have for you.
Councilmember Dean.
Yes, thank you. I enjoyed another opportunity for learning and networking with others in municipal government at the Michigan Municipal League Elected Officials Academy. I was honored to have been asked by the league to be the moderator this past weekend and it was everything you ever wanted to know about municipal government and then some closer to home. Celebrate the kickoff of Berkeley Days by attending the Ninth Annual Taste of Berkeley and Silent Auction. That benefits the Berkeley Huntington Woods Youth Assistance, Thursday, May 16th, from 6 to 8:30, 21 and over only, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman.
Okay, the Beautification Committee, which we can have unlimited members, but we are welcoming two new members. Let me find my names here. Danielle Severs and Charlene Conrad. Welcome aboard. We're looking forward to seeing you on this Tues, no, yeah, this Tuesday, the 8th. And we meet upstairs in the Public Safety Conference Room. We're always open to new ideas. One of the new ideas for a project is the gazebo and I would just like to mention that to our city manager as a possible project to do some repairs to the gazebo by our maintenance staff.
Yes, ma'am. We've been discussing that.
Because it's looking pretty bad.
Yes, it certainly needs, definitely some trim work, some paint work. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. The library, please see the website. We have, because there's too many things, they offer just too many things to read them off every meeting. But there's a lot of interesting things. In fact, I just enrolled my daughter and I in one on the 21st of May, which is so we can learn how to use our new Instant Pot. Welcome to two, two new committee members, Christopher Rennie and Mary Jo Armstrong. And we meet the third Wednesday of the month and so, we're looking forward to seeing them then. The Citizens Engagement Advisory Committee, we met last week. Our Block Ambassador Program will start in June and Jay Grossman will send something out about that before our next meeting, which will be June 5th, I believe. Christopher Copacia is our new committee member for the Citizens Engagement Advisory Committee. And I did notice one thing, out of the five committees that were lacking members, three of them were mine. So, I don't know what that's all about, but anyways, that's all I have tonight.
I'm sure there is certainly no correlation there. Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor. I attended the North American Act of Assailant Conference a few days ago. The first day was a pre-conference for elected officials and there was presentations. First one was by the Police Chief of San Bernardino, California, on the shooting at the Inland Regional Center where 14 were killed and 22 were wounded. The second was a presentation by the City Manager of Aurora, Colorado, where they had a shooting at a theater, 70 were shot, 12 were killed. The purpose of this conference was to look at what they did and analyze lessons learned. And here are some of the key things that we got from this. What do people want in an emergency? They want information and they want leadership. The problem with information is you have to manage that information, you have to manage the media. And three of the key things in information or media management are a unified front, transparency and defined speaking roles, so that we're getting a correct message to the correct people. Another thing that came out that was extremely important is trauma of the event on the first responders. There was a, a number of cases in all of these different things where they had to force first responders to go to counseling after the event because it was so traumatic. And, you know, a lot of police and firefighters, they don't want to do that, but they have to set that up. Another thing was open resiliency centers for victims' families. You have to have a place where the victims' families can go, where they can get information, ask questions, and you have to have somebody there that can get them answers. It can't be just come and let them talk and no action is taken. There have, has to be action taken. And the other one is training. And this is an old one from when, when I was in the Army, I heard it again here. You train because you fight like you train. So when there's an incident, you react to your training. And this last two sentences here, hoping and praying is not a strategy. Planning and training is a strategy. Luckily, we're doing that. We're planning and we're training. I was out at Indian Springs Metro Park yesterday with a county-wide rescue task force exercise where we had the sheriff's department, we had all, almost all the heavy rescue in the county. We had drones, we had helicopters, and it was a great training event for a, a rescue scenario. So, Berkeley is staying in tune with all this stuff, just want to let you know that, but we have to stay vigilant. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a chat with Matt coming up on May 29th. It's going to be out in J.C. Park, kind of get outside of the usual four walls and just have kind of a free-flow dialogue there at the pavilion. I have it on good authority, it's either going to be gorgeous that day, snowing, raining, incredibly hot or freezing cold. So, just dress for whatever. And I would say, I'll, I'll see you there, meet you there and looking forward to having the conversation.
Good?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Just very quick, I just wanted to advise the council members in case you weren't aware, but following the Berkeley City Council's lead in basically adopting the prohibition on the, the e-cigarettes and the sale to minors, since our last council meeting, the State Senate has passed a bill that would likewise ban the sale or furnishing of e-cigarettes and related tobacco products. I, my understanding, it was going to the House.
I, my understanding, it was going to the House, but it looks like it has a more favorable chance of passing than when the subject has been visited in past years. So anyway, like I said, following, following your lead, maybe the rest of the state will likewise have the type of prohibition that we've adopted locally.
Excellent, thank you. A few items this evening. First of all, Saturday, May 11th, is the Public Safety Golf Outing, which kicks off a very busy week, probably for all of us. So Saturday is the golf outing, Sunday is Mother's Day, so certainly happy Mother's Day to all of the mothers out there. Monday, Tuesday, budget hearings, fun for us. Wednesday, softball game, speed over that one. Thursday, Taste of Berkeley, as well as the midway opens. Friday, horseshoe, which we will get revenge for that. But again, Berkeley Days then is in full swing. Berkeley Days obviously is going to carry through the rest, the rest of the weekend, so a very, very busy week coming up. It's a great week for the city. Important to note that it is a great work for the city because of the volunteers who put in a tremendous amount of time and planning every year to, you know, improve, even when, you know, curveballs are thrown at the committee, and they no longer have an ice arena to use. Still able to find ways to fit everything, and to continue to add and to make it just an excellent event, and one of the, you know, signature events in our city every single year. So that is certainly coming up, and we're looking forward to all of those events. If you haven't registered for that Public Safety Golf Outing, there might still be room. I would try to figure that out very, very quickly. In the mayor pro tem's absence, I have some updates from the historical committee. I do not unfortunately have a quote, though, he did not leave me one of those. But the museum has its wonderful restaurant display up. Pictures, menus, memorabilia from a couple dozen now-gone favorite spots. The display will run May and June, so check that out in the museum. Every day on the Facebook page in honor of Berkeley History Month, they're posting an event that happened on that date sometime in the past. So if you haven't been following up with those, you definitely want to do that. They're a lot of fun, and people seem to be enjoying them, which is a great use of, of social media. Roger, second graders are visiting the museum that month, this month, that will certainly be fun. I've taken many second graders through that museum. Whoever is in the museum at that time, I'm sure will be on full alert, something will get knocked down. And then I will, I'll finish up with, a few meetings ago, I mentioned that I would be chairing a committee on the community center, and what is going to happen in the future, at least what our residents would like to see happen. And that was going to, that I asked my colleagues here, my peers, to contribute some names so that we could hopefully take, have our first meeting at the end of May. Although we've had a couple of folks who have had to unfortunately back out due to some, some changes in their own personal schedules. I do have 12 names, just missing one. There will be a 13th at this point, we have 12. Once I have that last name, I'll reach out to everybody, everybody will be contacted. I have all their information, so that we can find the day for that first meeting, and then at that first meeting, plan a schedule moving forward that works for everybody. But in the interim, I at least wanted to give everybody an update on the committee as it currently stands. I thank each of these people that I'm going to read off, certainly now, for their willingness to be part of this important group in our community, something that is a very emotional, passionate topic, at least if, if last November was any indication of that, which is why it's, it's important to be able to convene this group, to kind of do again a postmortem on that, and, and what we potentially may want to see in our city moving forward. At this point, these are the lucky 12, there will be a 13th to come. Barry Pfeifer, Cameron Rye, Matt Dugan, Duggan, sorry, Angela Clark, Denise Dean, Dan Mihasku, Lisa Kempner, Kelly Smith, Dawn Banks, Annalise Petrus, Lori Saunders, and Jason Wolfarth. So those are the 12 current members who will be appointed. Again, I want to thank them for their willingness to engage, and to be part of hopefully what is going to be a solution moving forward. And as soon as we have that last name, which would be relatively soon, you'll all be hearing from me, so we can get this first meeting on the books. That's all I have. With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilmember Blanchard, with support from Councilmember Stedman. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
And Terbrack?
Yes. The Monday, May 6th, 2019, meeting is adjourned.